I'm on this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is July 25, 2023, and it's 7:03. What the clerk call the rules, please?
Councilman Wright.
Present.
Councilman Musa.
Present.
Councilman Chagri.
Present.
Councilman Maher.
Yes.
Councilman Elsmieri.
Yeah, present.
Mr. Mayor is present. Uh, Councilman Hassan is not present. Mr. Mayor, we have four.
Thank you. He's right. But, yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which has one nation, the republic of America, indivisible, infinite, and ever so small. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
Yes, you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
To remind everyone regarding the victory of the Hamtramck City Football Team, they won at the fourth annual Eliminating Community Championship in Memphis, Tennessee. This is the second time they won this championship. Uh, the first one was in the state of Alabama. Uh, the second time they won it, two days ago, in Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, I want to thank all the organizers that hosted this tournament in Memphis, Tennessee by Ibrahim Al Tossad and all the coaches and the players that played. Around eight to 12 teams have played that tournament. So Hamtramck had won the championship. Twelve, right?
Twelve.
Uh, we're proud of the team. They actually are from Hamtramck. They've been in Hamtramck for many years. This team been, uh, been active for at least 15 years, I remember. So now they, they're finalized to be a soccer club, uh, where now they, they have teenagers and kids play for the football. We're happy that they won. They presented Hamtramck wall. Also, they came back with the championship. Uh, we're all proud of them. Uh, hopefully, we will, uh, present the certificate today, right?
Yeah. And then they have an event tomorrow, like a parade around the city. It's gonna be up at 6 o'clock and dinner at 7 o'clock.
So if anybody wants to attend that, uh, that party, they're gonna do, they're gonna start at the parking lot in Holbrook and J.C. And then from there, we'll drive around the city with the team and all the coaches and then head back to Key Worth. And from Key Worth, it will be a smaller dinner for these championships. Thank you.
So should we present the certificate to them now or?
Uh, if you'd like, Mr. Mayor. I had a few updates too, so your pleasure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, as we know, this is construction season. Um, the work on Kniff continues. Uh, we appreciate everyone's patience on that. We know it's very frustrating to be interrupted, but the end, the end product will be a nice brand-new street sidewalk, so bear with us. Uh, one of our contractors has just fired up. We have about 70 different locations in the city that we're doing miscellaneous repairs on. That includes missing sidewalks, various street repairs, and things that we fixed over the past year. Um, this contractor usually comes in only once or twice a year and kind of blitzes the city and does all these repairs. These are the ones that have been frustrating, uh, everyone over the year, that everyone's been patiently waiting and reaching out to us for. Well, they're here now and they're working. Um, we also anticipate doing the North Kniff Alley between Joseph Campo and Mitchell. Uh, we hope that's gonna be starting mid-August. The East Joseph Campo Alley between Kniff and Comer will also be mid-August. The East Joseph Campo Alley between Roosevelt and Goodson, mid-August. And then we also have, um, multiple street repavings scheduled coming up. Uh, actually, our first, uh, new business item is to extend a contract to be able to fire, fire up our paver and, uh, and get those done as well. Uh, if someone wanted to look forward on, to the, uh, further resolution, they could see a list of streets, uh, but I suspect we're also gonna talk about that later with council. Uh, and lastly, our goal, it's very ambitious, but we're hoping to get upwards of, um, 500 lead service lines done this year. So, um, Hamtramck Mutual Aid is looking for volunteers. Uh, all the information can be found on community announcements. Uh, and there was also a media, um, advisory from the Hamtramck Parks Conservancy looking for volunteers for the Boom build-out, which as we know is the place gate over at Veterans in the Back. Uh, they were, they're all day today working on it and anticipate them to do it throughout the week, but particularly, they're looking for volunteers for this Friday from 8 to 2 with a ribbon cutting at, uh, 2:30. All the information, if anyone wants to volunteer, is on our board docs here and the community announcements. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think there are more members of the soccer team coming on the way, right? Are there more people coming or?
Yes.
So all, all do their presentations and then, uh, present a certificate to them later.
Excuse me, ma'am. Uh, when we add the Black Alley, we missing one Black Alley between Gallagher and Cherst. Yes, we have scheduled like two years. Between Gallagher and Cherst behind supermarket Holbrook Market.
That, that is a list of important ones. We, we have a larger list of ones.
But should be, should be, should be scheduled first with the less than the ones. We didn't move it. They moved it a couple times. Okay. I need to add this one for this project this, this year.
We can certainly see what we, we can do, Councilman. Uh, we can, we can talk offline and see what we can do.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any other announcements?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move to proclamation, recognitions, and presentations. We'll start with presentation on parking revenues.
Mr. Mayor, I have our controller here with us today with a short presentation. Uh, it's just an overview of the performance of the parking meters and revenue over the past year or so. Uh, we'll have a quick PowerPoint up on the screen as well when the Madam Clerk puts it up.
As you all know, uh, we switched to MPS sometime in August of 2019, uh, to, you know, regulate our parking activity in the city. Uh, we have 292 meter spaces which are being monitored by meters and parking sticks in the city. We have about 33 safety sticks. Uh, there is a mobile app, uh, which, uh, people can use to pay for the parking. All the parking meters and everything installed by MPS. Uh, and since we went live, uh, September of 2021, 4,000, 400,000-plus parking sessions have been sourced by the meters and 90,000-plus parking violations have been, uh, through the system. Now, this is a seven-day, uh, you know, average. Uh, as you can see, the average is picking up, but still below the pre-pandemic levels, uh, in the past. We're looking at, you know, about 1,200 to 1,300 sessions per week. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's picking up, but, you know, we haven't reached the level that we saw before pandemic. You have to keep in mind that, you know, we did make a few changes in the ordinance. We reduced the timings, uh, you know, from, uh, from Monday to Saturday from 8:00 in the morning to 6:00. So that also negatively affected our revenues. Next page. Also, we produced, uh, enforcement, uh, in December to observe for the holiday season. And subsequently, this year, we also produce that during the holidays. This is the average, uh, revenue that we're looking at on a monthly basis. December, as you can see in this, is the lowest. And, uh, we didn't have really any, uh, you know, enforcement during that one. Subsequently, uh, you know, our revenue increased and then a couple of months, like April, June, you see lower because of weekly holidays. This is the net, uh, operating income for parking revenues, uh, parking activities. And again, uh, we are looking at close to, uh, you know, average 45,000, 26,000 monthly as far as this whole year's system, from July to, uh, July to June. You can see the variability depending on the different months, yeah, totally going on. One of the things, uh, that we have is that, uh, a lot of the expenses are borne by MPS in terms of credit card processing fees and some of the other fees, connectivity fees. Those are all borne by it. And what this reflects is the net revenue that the city receives. Right now, we're looking at close to, next page, about around $32,000, uh, you know, dollars per month on a incremental basis for the city. Before we implemented MPS, our average revenue was around 7,000. So this is a significant increase in terms of revenue for the city once, uh, since we implemented this whole scheme. So that's a short presentation just to show you, you know, we have a very steady, uh, revenue scheme from here. And it has come down since the pandemic, uh, but there are various uses. Some is the low business activity, the other is the change in ordinance and, uh, you know, a little bit of break during the holiday season.
So 32,000, is that our cut?
32,000, yeah.
That's our cut monthly?
That's our cut.
Each month? Even though the, where, you know, uh, three days is up?
Yeah.
It fluctuates.
It fluctuates. No, but that's an average. That's an average.
So how frequent do we get paid? Cause I don't see it in many of the voices, like, in terms of, you know.
We, we, we don't pay them every month. With the contract that we have is the revenue is processed, uh, and it comes through the court. The court sends us the revenue. And then MPS, whatever they collect through their system, it's a combination of the fees that we collect through, uh, the apps, the meters, and then credit cards, and then the tickets that you can commentate.
We also collect coins. We collect all the coins. We collect all the revenue from, uh, the citations issued. So we actually end up cutting a check to them because we have the bulk of the finances.
We receive most of the money and then whatever expenses that they bear for this activity, then we make those payments. So those payments, uh, we generally make them, uh, we try to make them as we get their invoices, but sometimes we pay them like two or three months together. That's why you don't see it every month, payment to MPS, but, uh, we try to process it as with their requests coming.
We've also began to get a lot more steady with it too. I mean, the first year or so was relatively shaky on sorting out a lot of particulars. I mean, we changed things on it. Uh, we still were bickering with them a little bit on what they should get and shouldn't get. Um, and then finally, when everything leveled off, now it's sort of a, uh, fallen into a routine on it. So I do anticipate it being a little bit more regular now.
Like, for example, their invoice for May came in late. So we haven't paid the May invoice. We're waiting for the June. We closed the June for them and so we were to make, uh, both these payments together.
Mr. Chair, one more question. Now, our second year, we're into this new year. Are people, this income we're getting, is it more through violations or people now are applying or not using machine? And it would form varies more.
It's a combination, you know, because violations, yeah, noticed through the parking meters and, and the cameras that are there, but a lot of the revenue comes in because people, when they're parking, you know, they are paying.
And people are used to now being using machines.
I think it's, it's the frustration, I mean, not that there isn't still frustration, because there is, but I think it's died down significantly. I think people are adapting to it, learning to use it. I think more people are using the apps. Um, I mean, it's becoming more of a norm. We're always going to have some sort of issues because, you know, we'll get a new user in or someone that just doesn't understand it, but, um, we do our best to try and help them when we can, so.
And I think the, the mode method that people have available to them to make the payments, like credit cards, like the app, you know, like coins, you know, it'll become easier and, uh, you know, people will get familiar with how we use them.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, uh, I know we adjusted, uh, down the, down the road that for the business owners to yearly or in annually, uh, measures, did they come through, like, were they helpful to the business owner?
It was, yeah. We, we know it's, it was, not only was it helpful for the business owners, because it has to come in monthly, it helped our administration a lot too, because we weren't processing everything every month. It's just a one-shot, you're good for the year, come see us in a year.
And so we're, you know, the business is good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So you don't have the specific number, how much you're getting from the, like? No, I don't have a, it's right. I, I don't have a breakdown of that, but yes, I can get that.
Yeah. Councilman, if anyone has like a, a specific question, and this was meant to be a brief overview to kind of show you the performance of it, but if there's specific questions you have, if you want to just give them to me, we'll, we'll have to give you exactly what you want.
We thought I still get some emails from visitors who gets violation and they just decide not to visit us anymore. I get that.
And if they love enough, they'll visit us again.
Yeah, no, I think the other thing, the other thing is, if you notice, if you go to any other city, these parking meters are there, so you can't avoid them anymore, you know? And the thing that we have, and a lot of the cities are doing the same thing, is that in the evening, parking is free, you know? On Sundays, parking is free. So things like that, you know, it just facilitates the owners.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Talking, are they all here?
Yeah, there are a lot of kids out there.
So let's do the second presentation for MERS and then we present the certificate to the team.
Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, well, a number of people on this one. Primarily, one of our contractors, Colleen. Oh, Jesus. Yeah, that's the man. I think, Karen Cagnito there. Uh, I have Colleen here to help present with this along with, obviously, Amir, Mashana. Um, the whole team basically kind of worked on this one, so. Colleen, do you wanna come up? Uh, we're gonna put you up on the screen.
Okay. Hi. I'm very excited to be here and to meet all of you. One of my favorite things is walking in through that park and I love that park. All those kids are always out there. Um, are you putting this up?
Yep, I got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to show your face before I switch over.
Shouldn't it seem that this, this presentation ties into at least four of the resolutions in new business?
So, um, I'm gonna, this is, this is predominantly, um, so one of the reasons I'm excited to be here tonight is because on the agenda, you are being presented with a number of items that are going to solve some compliance issues that we've had on the third floor. Compliance issues that have been brought up. Um, in audits, uh, compliance issues that we haven't been audited on yet. And so there's a lot of items here that will take care of those compliance issues for you. And one of them, oh, hi. One of them is, um, the pension plan design. And so I've been working very closely with HR on this and, um...
Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. We're very pleased with this plan that we have. But anyway, the pension plan introduction and the role of Human Resources Department is to find talent for the city of Hamtramck. There are several issues and current issues with non-union pension plan design that we currently have. And one of them is inconsistency in our pension plans. The next one is compliance with MERS and the IRS rules. Um, thirdly, um, an equitable pension plan design for all employees. And then lastly, the lack of affordability for both the employer and the employee. And the solution that we are proposing is a new pension plan that is about affordable for the employee and the employer, and it will address our compliance issues. And we are grossly negligent and meeting the terms of MERS, and it will address the issues overall in the city.
So I'm going to, you can, you can move, thanks. So I'm, I'm gonna just take you through a little bit of a background of what pension plans are. So you are an employer. You're an employer of a number of employees and employers have certain obligations to those employees and they have certain objectives when they're trying to bring those employees in. And having a good retirement plan helps with getting, meeting the objectives, right? And also meeting some of your responsibilities as an employer. So there are four primary goals when you look at establishing retirement plans. They have to be fiscally sustainable. So I don't know if you, how, how long you've all been in government, but one of the problems we have in the state of Michigan, we, we have it in a number of states in the country, is that the pension plans that were offered to employees were not fiscally sustainable. And so we have huge unfunded liabilities. You have a huge unfunded liability in Hamtramck. We have huge unfunded liabilities everywhere. And so one of these, one of these objectives is that really this should, these plans need to be fiscally sustainable. And MERS is the Michigan Employee, Employees Retirement System. It is a governmental entity that helps us administer our plans. And so they were actually part of the problem, in my humble opinion, but they have now taken a couple steps. And one of the steps that they say is that they won't let you open a new plan, open a new division if it isn't less expensive than the one that you were offering before and if your normal cost can't be sustained. So normal cost means a cost that's gonna cost you this year for that employee to deposit into the account so that it will sustain them when they retire. So fiscal, um, sustainability is absolute key and it is the number-one objective. The second one is that we want to assist and partner with these employees. We don't want them to leave employment with the city of Hamtramck and not be able to afford to put food on their table when they're retired. The third objective is to attract and retain talent. Now, in the state of Michigan right now, what, it could be national, I don't know, we're at less than 4% employment, which means we don't have enough employees. And so getting the employees to walk in the door, we need to make it, um, attractive for them. So the fourth and final goal of these retirement plans is that we can meet the compliance requirements. We can't make them so complicated that the staff cannot maintain the compliance requirements. If you can move to the next? Okay, so those are our core goals. Oh, I must have done something fancy there.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, all right. Um, at this particular moment, the non-union pension plans fail three of the four objectives. You do not assist and partner with your employees. In some cases, your employees have no retirement plan whatsoever. They not, are not involved in anything. In others, the entire cost of that plan is on the employee. It is, we are not attracting and retaining talent because some of the plans you have have a 10-year vesting. There is no one walking out of college who's interested in a 10-year vesting. We are in a different world than when these things were established in the 1950s. Young people come out and they expect to move. Um, and then we are not meeting our compliance requirements. Some of the plans you have were just implemented when you were under an emergency manager and emergency managers don't fully always understand, uh, the pension plan designs. So the pension plans that you have right now, the city is struggling to meet the compliance requirements. So we're failing three of four objectives. It's not really a good place to be.
No, it's just that there was too much distraction. Your, your presentation is important and I don't want the distraction to...
Do you want me to wait? Please, please continue, Colleen. There, there's getting some...
I can wait. Okay, I'll just talk louder. Okay. Can you move to the next one?
No.
Okay, so I want to explain to you some of the different types of pension plans. The one that we're proposing to you tonight is called a defined benefit plan. And what a defined benefit plan means is that we've said there's a formula that will go in play and when the employee retires, they know exactly how much they're going to receive every month. So it's called, we're defining the benefits that they're walking out the door with. Another, um, pension plan design is a defined contribution. Now, I don't know if you all work in the private sector, but 401Ks, those are defined contributions. So defined contribution says we are defining the amount we put in regardless of what you come out with. So we're defining the amount you put in and if that goes up or down or you lose all, you know, you lose your shirt and you can't afford to put food on the table, the entire risk is on you as an employee. So a defined benefit plan kind of shares the risk. Um, we're not even talking about cash balance plans. So a hybrid plan is a combination of a defined benefit and defined contribution. And what we're proposing to you tonight is a defined benefit plan that frees up enough money for the employee to then put some of their own money away in retirement. So we're not giving them a Cadillac here. We're giving them a base fair minimum, but something, right? We're giving them something and we're freeing up a little bit of money out of their paycheck. They still need to save on their own. So they can put it in a traditional IRA, which is very similar to a defined contribution plan, right? That's what it is. So that's our objective here. Um, can you move to the next one? Okay, so, so for everybody who's listening who thinks they're gonna retire at some point, the average person is expected to need 80% of your current wage. So when you talk to your investment advisor, make sure that you are moving toward the fact that you will have 80% in your retirement. Social Security, for those who are enrolled in Social Security, can be expected to cover approximately 36% of that. For Social Security, the employee contributes 6.2% and the employer contributes 6.2%. So that is a, that is a Social Security law, right? All employers who have employees in Social Security, you are required to pay 6.2%. That is a defined benefit plan, right? So when you, when you're done working, you can, you know exactly what you're gonna get from Social Security. So the remaining 44% that you need in order to retire and maintain somewhat of a standard of living, the 44% has to come from what you individually do and what your employer assists you with. So that's why it is one of the key goals of pension plan designs, right? Your employees have to come up with the remaining 44%. Um, so here's how a defined benefit plan works. The defined benefit plan under MERS, which the city of Hamtramck participates with, has three components that we use to determine what are you gonna walk out the door with. We're going to multiply your years of service times your final average compensation and we're gonna multiply that by a benefit multiplier. The majority of Hamtramck plans have a 2% benefit multiplier. That is a nice multiplier, right? It will, it's not a Cadillac. We're not talking about Cadillacs here. Um, so that's how we figure out what it's gonna cost. And then we get an actual... And then we get an actuarial analysis every year that tells us, did they earn money? Did they, I mean, did they make money on the investments? They project out what this is going to cost for the life of the employment of that individual. So right now, we have three plans here for the non-union employees. We're recommending, we're proposing to close all of those and open a single plan that everybody will be in. Every non-union employee of yours is, this is going to be the plan we offer them. And you'll notice, one of the things we did, ooh, is this a little thing?
No, that's your mic.
Is there a little pointer?
Oh.
Okay. So see the normal retirement age here of 55? That's a pretty low retirement age for administrative groups. So we stepped the retirement age up to 60. 55 is a retirement age that we normally see for public safety, right? You can't be a policeman and a fireman, which is very physically taxing, till you're 60 years old. So there was no reason for the retirement age to be down here at 55. By stepping the retirement age up to 60, we have dramatically reduced the cost of this plan. We also changed the vesting from 10 years to five. We changed the vesting to five years because that is what's going to attract two groups of employees. One are your recently retired who are going to, aren't completely ready to walk out of the workforce, but they're going to walk in here with a lot of knowledge. You actually have two of those people on the third floor. One is your HR director, and the other one is your CFO controller. The other group that this attracts are the young people, who we really want to get walking in the door here, right? If you tell them that they're going to have a pension in 10 years, it means absolutely nothing to them. Five years, though, if we tell them five years, then it's worth our training, right? We can train them and get everything we can out of them, and they will stick for five years. So those are the two big changes that we've made to the proposed plan design. And, is there another? Okay, you can move to the next slide. Okay. So this new plan design now meets all four of your goals. From compliance requirements, it's easy. If you're non-union, you are going in this plan. You don't have a choice. This is your plan. So we know we've met the compliance, right? Because if you have a pension plan, you are supposed to enroll everyone in there. It helps you attract and retain the talent we just talked about. It is an assistance and partner with the employees. A 3% contribution is affordable for them, still leaves them free to deposit in other retirement areas. So there's two, we broke this down. We talked to the court at the request of the CFO, and the court has signed on to this plan. It will cost the court, who generates their own income, $23,490. It will cost the city to address all the new hires and then take a step into making it more equitable with some of those current plans. We can't move employees out of there, but they're contributing more money. You know, what we're doing is we're equalizing the employer cost across all your plans, right? So whatever the employer cost is, we equalize that, and then the difference is what the employee has to come up with. So this, this proposed plan meets all these goals. We're very excited about it. And I think we're going to hand it off to Mashana, and then we'll close with any questions.
Thank you, Colleen. So in conclusion, the issues, some of the employees, as Colleen stated, are not enrolled in any plan at all. The second one is inconsistent application of the plan. We are not enrolling our employees in the appropriate plan, and we have allowed some employees to elect not to become, not to enroll in the defined benefit plan. The next one is non-compliance with MERS and the IRS rule. It will fix our non-compliance issue, and then it will also address our enrollment issues, as I spoke to, allowing some employees the option to not join the defined benefit plan that we already have. The solution that we have came up with is that the city has to offer a consistent pension plan for their non-union employees, and there can be no opt-in. An employee cannot opt to say, you know, they don't want to participate in the pension plan. The lower plan design cost is more affordable compared to the existing defined benefit plans that the city currently has. It will correct the inconsistencies and the errors, and also the compliance issues that Colleen and I both spoke about. This new plan has been verified and approved by MERS. We had constant, we were in constant contact with MERS, and they advised us on, you know, the particulars of what we needed for this new plan. And then lastly, the city's, the 31st District Court also wants to adopt this plan. We took this plan to the judge, and she also is on board with this new plan. Thank you for your time, and now we will take any questions.
Can we bring a mirror?
A mirror, yes, definitely. We need a mirror.
True.
Our finance guy.
So, can we proceed with the questions?
Sure.
So I know several years ago, they changed the plan to make it as the current situation that we have now. So can you explain why they did? Was it because there was a lot of burden on the city, or what? And why did we decide not to change this?
So, in short, we've had a couple of emergency managers over the years. We've had all kinds of problems with, like, really lucrative plans in the past that are nothing near this. I mean, we have people, I'd say, getting wealthy in retirement at the courtesy of Hamtramck, but those are all gone, long gone. Emergency managers came in and kind of took, I'd say, an overzealous stance on this, setting up things with, you know, huge contributions for employees and basically just gutting what we had. Plus, it left us with, you know, a disparity amongst the employees of everyone's in all kinds of different things. You know, we have three different plans open right now. Plus, if you want to say a fourth, we've got people that aren't even in a plan. So our goal is basically to standardize this, get rid of all the other stuff, and have one sustainable plan that works actually better for the city in the long run and better for the employee currently, for many reasons.
And did you ask how the errors were found? What was your last question that you asked?
I mean, why now we are deciding to switch to this plan?
Oh. Well, now you have an HR director who has some experience, and I have a lot of experience. And so your previous HR director was learning, was learning her job, right? So the compliance issues have been of great concern to me. And Mashana also jumped right on that. We've had several meetings with MERS to say, we don't even understand this, and they said, we don't even understand it. We don't know what you guys did over here.
It was very, very confusing to implement the plan, being that HR was in charge with submitting the monthly reports and employee contribution. And I had the hardest time trying to understand how the plans even work. So if you can't understand it, you can't administer it, right? So, you know, we had to call MERS, and then thank God, Colleen was the consultant, and I couldn't understand what the plans were doing because people were everywhere. Then I had people that weren't even enrolled. So that's why we, you know, delved in and decided that now is the time to fix our compliance issues that have been neglected for a few years.
Basically, we're fixing things. I mean, as, as we discover things, we're trying to fix them. I mean, we've had, we have all kinds of issues in this area, and there's, there's other issues throughout City Hall, and as we discover them, we're repairing them and redoing them. So this is a gap in something we need to repair, and we bring it before you to clean it up.
So, I'm sorry, I'm just, so, on the long term, how is it going to affect our budget? Because now one-third of our budget goes for pension application.
Better. We're changing the plan from 55 retirement to 60, which means we're not on the hook until later in life.
I think as far as the budget is concerned, this plan is more affordable for the city compared to what we had previously. If we tried to roll these employees from the previous plans, it would cost the city more. So that's why, you know, we decided to come up with a new division, increase the age to 60, to make it more affordable for the city and make it more attractive for the employees. So that is why this is a more affordable plan in the long run for the city.
MERS would not let us do this if it was a more lucrative plan than we had.
Yeah. If, if, if this, if this plan was more lucrative and more expensive than the previous plans, MERS would not allow it. That's why we had a detailed discussion with MERS, sent them all the working, they reviewed it, approved it, and gave us back this plan.
And where do we stand now with the state contribution that this makes?
So, pending. We just, it's in the middle of the process. They're now notifying municipalities of their award. We have not received it yet, but everything's been submitted, and we're anticipating probably any day to get notified, so.
They've issued some temporary listing of some of the potential cities, and they are, until they are processing all of them. So the applications are in the process phase. So they're, you know, they're processing the applications, and hopefully, you know, sometime next month, we will be informed of their decisions, and then, you know, then we get a...
Our hope is that, obviously with the state help, it'll bring us a percentage up significantly. The revamp of the plan here to close the other ones and have one plan that's consistent, that actually is better for the city in the long run, to basically clean this up. And then third, we hope to continue to pay extra in MERS to get those percentages up even higher so that we never, we never have this issue again.
I think, you know, as far as Michigan is concerned, most of the cities are way below the threshold of 60%. And that's the reason, you know, the state decided to come up with that ramp, to bring everybody up to that 60% level. And they are evaluating all the cities based on their last evaluation as to which, at what percentage they are at, and they are going to bridge that gap between where we were to 60%. And going forward, the eventual goal is to take it up to 100%. I can't say it, but I have a feeling that going forward, maybe in a few years' time, they will review this whole situation just like they did now, and they'll come up with another scheme to bring all the cities up to the liabilities.
I hope so, but, I mean, last time when they voted, the Democrats were against that now they are going to do it. So hopefully, they can change their mind.
So hopefully, we take enough measures by then to be in shape.
No, and this award would be decided in the next month or so. So in a month's time, we would know, you know, how much we are getting.
Thank you.
What question is, previously, a year ago, we had the same HR team here. You spoke about that?
Mashana's been here less than a year.
Well, before her, when the HR, we had another HR. And we talked about this, and they said, well, these plans, I think, you know, were part of the best. Now we have another group saying, well, we've changed this now, we think this is the best. So within a year, we're going to have different, you know, with respect, I don't know how she's going to be here, we're going to have another HR stand up here again.
We're hoping to keep her five years.
Well, I'm going to stay in. Stand up here again and say, well, listen, we have a different plan. So how long are we going to continue doing this?
Well, it's a good question.
I can't, I'm not sure which meaning you're speaking of specifically. I mean, I've had Mashana for most of my tenure here, not quite a year, but most of it. We had some rocky times with our HR prior to that, so I'm not particularly sure who we were referring to, but, I mean, at the end of the day, we're still, we're left with three different plans and a bunch of people not even enrolled, so.
That was before, before you came, it was with Kathy, and they were still here. And they said the same thing, you know, we have three plans, people can choose whatever they want. This is the best plan. And now we come back again, hey, we try to manage these three plans, have one plan, we think this is the best. So I just want to know, how long will this last?
If I may, I think that forever, no, but I think that they just didn't understand how the, how the plans work by even giving them the option to say, you can choose this or that was an error in itself, because you cannot choose, and the defined benefit is for your non-union employees, period. So that was just, I think, just an error, not being fully informed of how the plans work, and it is very complicated. I can't speak for them. My year is August the 8th. So I can't, I can't speak for them, but I don't think that they fully, we didn't even understand. It took me almost a year to fully understand how MERS is supposed to work. She understands, but it took me a year.
I've been doing this for 30 years, and I'm telling you, your plans are not in compliance. And I can't really speak to what your prior HR director did, but we've run into a number of areas where you could tell that she was learning her job, and that's okay, right? But I'm not learning my job on Hamtramck. I've been doing this for 30 years.
The other reason I'm saying that because we're not experts. We're listening to you guys because that's where you are expert, and these kind of...
It is why they asked me to be here.
And that's why we're asking this because, like I said, previously, they came, they, you know, we, that was the best plan. Now, it's a different plan. I just want to make sure we, you know, at least continue for a while, and hopefully we are for a while.
At least five years.
Another, another HR here comes saying the same, you know.
Kelton, this time around, we sought professional help from outside the city on it and worked with MERS very closely to bring this to you. I can't speak to why or why not. My predecessor didn't address this or did address this. I mean, they, they did a lot of good things, you know? But, you know, there's always different priorities and different things you come across. There's always going to be things to fix, you know? And like Mashana said, I mean, it's possible that they maybe didn't have their head around this as much as we do now, you know? So our intent is to try and fix this once and for all, and this is the end of it.
Mr. Chair, Councilman...
No, I was going to ask, are you, so we're making it mandatory for every employee that has to sign for it?
Yes.
On, on non-union employees, why can't you keep it open? And whatever they contribute, we match them up at the city, like.
Well, we have some employees that aren't even enrolled in a plan at all, you know, at all. So we can't take the employees out of a plan, or we can't add to the existing plans.
Changing the contribution every year requires new enrollment paperwork. So you determine what the employer, employer contribution is on year one, and then it falls. So, yeah, you might be thinking of a defined contribution plan.
Yeah, defined benefit plan.
But that's, what we want them to do is put their money in a defined contribution plan predominantly right now, like in IRA, and we're not going to match at all. We're doing this, you know, Chevy, I don't know, Chevy, you know, Chevy, right? This is a Chevy plan, so it's good. It's going to get you, it's going to get you around town, but it's not a Cadillac. And if they want a Cadillac, they need to stay on their own.
All right. Mr. Chair, I think about me, actually, I was going to ask this question, the existing contract with the employees, you already answered that MERS wouldn't allow it to adjust it. That was one of my questions. But my second question is, will this affect our current budget balance? This is not going to affect it, it's just going to...
Yeah, because this is, like I said, this is going to cost the city 68,000 for the year.
Come on.
68,000.
60,000. And then, right, and then the cost for the...
Court.
Court is going to be around 13, something, 20.
We anticipated fixing this.
So this would be, so on a total, it'll be 92,000 for the whole year.
So we had provided estimates to your controller and your city manager before we came to the proposal, and they both said that they'd fit this in the budget.
So I get one thing from all three of you. First of all, thank you for this nice presentation to all of you. Will this, I saw you're enthusiastic, will this retain the employees that we have with this plan?
Absolutely.
That's what we're trying to address.
That's one of the things we have here, issue that...
Yeah, they're leaving for better, for better offers.
It makes us more competitive. It makes us more competitive.
She's saying that, she's going to stay five years. I'll change it.
We should get a commitment on the record from both of them here.
But it would definitely address, you know, our retention problem, especially when you have an older, more mature worker. You know, it speaks to their needs as well.
I prefer like keeping the experienced employees continuously, as long as we can. That's always keep the city going better and efficiently.
It doesn't mean they won't stay more than five years.
Quite. That's the idea.
That's right, that's the idea. Because you lose so much manpower when you have to retrain, and then you lose all the knowledge. It makes it difficult.
That's been one of our biggest problems in our city is retention of employees and turnover, which would throw us in chaos anytime somebody leaves.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
This contract, we're considering 92,000 dollars. Can you tell me how much was from the last contract?
This was not there. So this is a, this is a new, this is a new division that we are creating to address. So like the HR said, that some of our employees are registered in another, and some are not even registered, you know. So what we're trying to do is we are trying to consolidate all of them to address the inconsistency and the errors of enrollment that we have, along with, you know, all the new employees that have come in. So this will cost about 92,000. So to answer your question, part of the cost for, who are already registered, the city has already paid, and some of the costs for the new employees that will come in, city has not paid. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Great, thank you so much. Thanks. It was really nice to see all of you.
You guys were great for the presentation.
All right, so we back to Hamtramck FC now.
That'll let them know all about the MERS.
So we were ready to present the certificate earlier, but you guys weren't here, so sorry to keep you waiting. But again, congratulations on your victory. We thank you for presenting Hamtramck in the best way possible. I was invited to this tournament in Tennessee, but I couldn't go, but I knew that our team would bring the trophy home, so. So we'll celebrate tomorrow with you, Insha Allah. We have a certificate of Hamtramck, certificate of achievement, Hamtramck City FC. This is to certify that Hamtramck City FC has demonstrated exceptional skill, dedication, and teamwork, securing victory as the proud winner of the 2023 championship tournament. This unwavering commitment to excellence, both on and off the field, has led them to achieve this remarkable triumph, showcasing sportsmanship and determination throughout the tournament. On behalf of the community, we extend our heartfelt congratulations to Hamtramck FC for their outstanding achievement, and wish them continued success in the future, in their future endeavors.
Congratulations. All right, so let's draw some pictures.
Maybe, how we can sit down? You know, if you can sit down, it's possible.
If we have people sitting down, it will be easier. You'll notice.
All right, say cheese.
Okay, everybody look at Max. Max, Max. Do you want to put that tippy?
Massama, sure, sure.
All right. Thank you.
Massama.
Take your time, Greg.
Hey, Max, you want to take another photo?
Yeah.
We got the medals there. All right, look at Max, guys. Get it on Facebook.
Look at the TV.
TV? Say, we'll do it again next year.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. All right, that's a good one.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, congratulations again.
You make this one.
Congratulations.
I watched it again, so.
Oh, they said one day they'll be paving for it.
Yeah, because those are all, you know, discounted to city. So if he was like a follower of you, it's not so. I can see if he's got a lot.
Yeah, so it's about 250, 350 is way too many.
I'm surprised how many agenda numbers are. I think I'm going to.
I think it's 250. Burger cab, American cab, 250, 250 food cab.
I was joking with Khalil. I was like, if we have a long agenda, it should be a percentage of time that we get per. Wishful thinking.
Well, we have these individuals.
There's one right there. I got one.
All right, we are back. How much? Right. Oh, I know. So we.
Did you forget to gift back the medal?
No, they gifted it to me. It's mine.
It has his name on it.
He don't play, but he got it.
All right, thank you. Now we move to additions and deletions. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
We have.
Oh, I do. I'd like to.
And edit the resolution. How fresh was it? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, and a second by councilor. Thank you.
All right, so we are adding a proven MOU between the Michigan Department of Treasury and the city of Hamtramck. That would be a resolution.
Q.
Q.
Resolution number 2023/120.
120, thank you. All right, thank you. And now we move to the.
I'm sorry, he motioned, but I needed a second.
I did, sir.
All right. Now to the public comment.